We got a quorum, don't we? Councilmember. Councilmember Degaro is on. Anyone heard from Neftali? And then we heard from councilmember Hasinto that she will be late. All right, we have a quorum. Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the agenda of the City Council Regular Meeting of the City of Coachella. The Council sitting as a Coachella Sanitary District, Coachella Fire Protection District, Coachella Finance and Authority, Coachella Education and Government Access Cable Channel Corporation, Coachella Water Authority, and the successor agency to the Coachella Redevelopment Agency. At this time, it is 6:01. We're going to begin our regular meeting. Just pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, along with the Governor's State of Emergency Declaration issued on March 4, 2020. This meeting will be conducted via teleconference and this meeting, the meeting options will be either in person or via Zoom. The public may make comment either in person via email, telephonically, or via Zoom with a limit of 250 words or three minutes in real time and writing or through the phone. Livestream once again is found on our website at Coachella.org, and it's found by clicking Coachella Council Meetings. I'm going to go ahead and ask our clerk, Andrea, if she can make the roll call.
Councilmember Degaro. Here. Mayor Parten Gonzalez.
Here.
Mayor Hernandez.
Here.
And to note for the record, councilmember Jimin Hasinto.
Yeah. We did hear from councilmember Hasinto that she will be late, and councilmember Galarza, we have not heard from him. Hopefully, he does arrive. If you could remind him, Mr. City Manager. That will move on to our virtual public meetings. This is Resolution Number 22-030, and this is to continue for partially virtual public meetings. What are the wishes of the City Council? There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on now to approval of the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, of the agenda. These are the, these are the Council Board Corporation Authority. May I announce any items being pulled? City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
There is a motion. And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move on now to the Pledge of Allegiance. I've been asked our city attorney if he could lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, forward now on proclamations and presentations. We do have a proclamation and presentations on the behavioral health campus of Glenroy. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item before you is going to be a presentation brought to you by the the County Riverside University Healthcare System. They, however, we, I wanted to read a statement from the, that was, that was provided to me by the, the current owner of the facility. They are requesting the following items be presented to the council as information. One of the points is the, the current owner, which is US Rec Coachella C, continues to work with the city and plans to amend the development agreement for the property to entitle the property as a hotel and resort that are mutual, and to mutually agree on terms with the city. They've been negotiating with the city in good faith the last few months, and plan to submit a formal application to the city for this purpose. The owner has not authorized and does not consent to any of the materials presented tonight. The owner does not have any agreement with the following parties. So, on the birth of Development, Riverside University Health System, or any other person or entity for the purchase lease or any use of the property, and the proposed development and the use of the property, the owner would, other than the owner's hotel resort project, would be not authorized by the owner at this time. However, the, like I indicated, the presentation today will be provided by the Riverside University Health System. They are proposing a project to, at the site for the development of the site. City has met with them, and we are in support of this project. We think it will be a, address a few needs, and it's a good alternate use for the, this, this site. So, without further ado, I would like to welcome Dr. Chang and his team to make the presentation on this proposed project for the site.
Hi, good evening. This is Melissa Noon. Dr. Chang is on the line. But I believe he still has an audience. Is there a way to bring him in as a panelist?
He is being promoted, and Dr. Chang, if you can please on your.
Hi, can you all, can you all hear me?
Yes.
I'm very, I'm very excited. I got promoted to a panelist, so I, I'm grateful for that. And I wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and City Manager and City Council for the opportunity to, to speak with you all today. I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay, and I'm not the most technologically advanced person, and so I apologize in advance.
Turn on your camera, that'd be great.
Yes, sir. You'll see me frantically trying to figure out how to work a computer. So, give me one second, sir.
There you go. You got it.
All right, can you all, can you all see me okay?
We can.
Okay. Um, so I wanted to thank you for, first of all, for letting us talk with you all today and present what we think is a wonderful opportunity. And, and namely, we wanted to discuss building a recovery village in Coachella. And the obvious question is, what is a recovery village? And simply put, it is a behavioral health campus that focuses on the continuum of care from a behavioral health, substance use disorder, and housing perspective. They will provide a safe therapeutic community and living space with high quality, person-first treatment. And we've heard in, from other forums, the desire in Coachella for county services and specifically county behavioral health services. And we're hopeful that we can address this. More than that, though, we believe this recovery village is an opportunity for transformational change and one that aligns well with the focus on emotional, physical, economic, and vocational recovery for the community. With $2.2, $2.5 billion in state behavioral health infrastructure funding coming down, there's a likely once-in-a-generation opportunity to create lasting change. And so what we propose today is to build a vibrant recovery village that addresses many of the core drivers of health, success, and happiness. We're looking for support for this mission. Before we start, though, I want to provide some historical perspective on how we collectively have got here. Since the 1950s, they have closed over 90% to 95% of state hospital beds. In the 60s and 70s, there were concerns of abuses, and these concerns were often well-founded. Unfortunately, what was left out in the push towards deinstitutionalization was a commensurate requisite increase in outpatient mental health services, funding, and housing. Instead, these most vulnerable among us went through a prolonged downward drift where they burned bridges with family, friends, and placements until they ended up in the lowest common denominator: emergency rooms, psychiatric hospitals, homeless on the streets, and of course jails. And this is how the three largest mental health institutions in the country are actually jails in LA, New York, and Chicago. And if you, it's a fair bet that if you go to any medium to large American city with a jail, the highest number of folks in the city with behavioral health issues will be incarcerated there. Bringing it more locally, we also face significant additional challenges. Riverside County is short approximately $150 million each and every year to provide behavioral health and substance abuse services throughout the county. Additionally, based on prevalence rates, we know we need to provide services for additional 110,000 population. On top of that, we witness the challenge of overlap with behavioral health and criminal justice system, and we see these folks struggling with the condition of being homeless. There is good news, however. RUHS, with the support of the County Board of Supervisors, has aggressively gone after competitive grants and brought down much more than our fair share in recent competitive allocations. We have even drawn the highest and second highest amount of funding in some of these competitive allocations and drawn down, for example, $49.2 million to date to build 281 permanent supportive housing units for individuals with serious mental illness. This has also allowed developers to build an additional 413 units. We are in the process of more than doubling our mobile crisis teams, including our law enforcement ride-along teams. The overarching theme in all of these efforts is a focus on right care, right time, right place. And we believe this recovery village is the jewel of the continual build-out, and we are most excited about it. Is it progressing for you, for you all?
Yes.
All right, excellent. So, one of the first points that I, I wanted to make is that we intend this to be a beautiful project. Some folks may have an idea of a stereotypical mental health institution, cold, drab, imposing, sort of one flew over a cuckoo's nest type of building. And that's certainly not at all our intent here. And later in the presentation, I will show you some more of our, our recent projects to hopefully illustrate that difference. And so here, here's a layout of the village and a list of various components. And I know that these program names, which are listed here in the program key and acronyms, may seem kind of wiggity. But I want you to know that all of these programs have been designed into the recovery village because they represent gaps in our continuum of care. We have included supportive housing departments, the Residential Substance Use Treatment Center, which I'll return to later, the Children's Mental Health Urgent Care and Rescue. And of note, we currently have zero Children's Mental Health Urgent Care beds anywhere in the county. I'll also point out the primary care space, as well as a grocery store, recreation center, and pet hotel. And again, this, this shows some of the floor plans and the layouts of what we're proposing to do. This, all for your consideration, is the potential location. It sits on 35, about 35 acres that you see here, and you see the zoning for it currently. And then I want to show a couple pictures, if I may, about what the project, what the property currently looks like. And then transition a bit. And so I mentioned at the outset or earlier on the concerns that we've heard from other communities about, you know, building stereotypical behavioral health, mental health facilities. And so I want to show some examples of the actual work that we've done. So, specifically here, this is our Cedar Glen Project. It's one of our No Place Like Home units, which I mentioned. Again, we've drawn down, you know, $49.2 million to build out, I think, 281 odd units for behavioral. So, it's a beautiful new facility. And actually, in Cathedral City, we built out Cathedral Palms, which are 68 units for seniors with mental illness. And that was the first project, at least in Southern California. We're a little unsure if it was the first project in the entirety of California. This here is our pictures of what we call the Arlington Recovery Community or the ARC and the Sobering Center. This is a remodel. And so what you see on the left is a picture of the old Helicon Building. This is a building in Riverside that historically served as a juvenile sex offender building and program. And so we have done a remodel to build out the Arlington Recovery Community and Sobering Center. And here you see some pictures as well. And then, and we, if you all look at some of the more recent projects we've done, we think they really are beautiful. And I think they really are nice in the community and for, and for the community. A couple pictures, if I may. These are also pictures of our crisis campus in Riverside, again, to hopefully drive home the point about the types of projects that we build. This was a ground-up project, and what you see here is the mental health urgent care. Again, it's, it's very different from what I think folks traditionally, stereotypically think of behavioral health, mental health facilities. And this, and this campus actually won a Riverside City Beautification Award, I think, 2018. And again, just another interior picture of the crisis campus. And, you know, we, we joke internally, we, we call it the Wellness Resort and Spa. But, you know, I, and, and this is something that we are very passionate about in terms of bringing to communities. We don't want to build these old, dilapidated, antiquated, stereotypical behavioral health facilities. We want to build beautiful buildings and projects for our consumers and for individuals who require our care and to really help them on their path towards wellness and towards recovery. So, you know, I started off talking about what we want to do with the site. Hopefully, you know, my intent here is to show what we have done. All of these projects have been completed in the last four odd years. I think we're on a, on a good run of building beautiful projects for the community that really serve the community. And then again, this is, this is Roy's or the Wendy Springs Wellness Center. This was a project that we opened up during COVID. We actually expedited the opening of it to help out with COVID. But this, we run it now as what we call augmented boarding care. And again, we spent a whole chunk of change to rehab this facility and to make it beautiful and to make it serviceable for our, our community and to provide the services that we know the folks need. Jumping a bit, so this is, this is a question that comes up in other, from other cities when we've spoken with them. And so I want to hopefully address this item if I can. The concern that we hear a lot is sort of the, the not in my backyard piece, which is one. Two, it's that, okay, we'll have this service here, but everybody from the county will use it, and therefore, Coachella's citizens won't be able to access it. And I brought this up, you know, this graph here. So, this graph shows the data in terms of where folks come for the Arlington Recovery Community or the ARC and Sobering Center Riverside. Essentially, what it shows is that folks, the vast majority come from Riverside, Riverside adjacent. But more to that, it speaks to the ongoing partnership and relationship with the city in that we meet with them. Now, it might be monthly, but it was kind of lots of hot and heavy in terms of the visits and the meetings to make sure that we were hearing what they were, their concerns about where folks are coming from, making sure folks were able to get back where they need to go, so on and so forth. And part of our commitment to you all is a similar approach. We will certainly take community input and feedback. This is not something that gets done today, tonight, and, and we never, we never see each other again. But rather, as we go through this process together, we work on what's working. We, we address what's not working well, and we really focus on together building out the types of services we know that the community needs. I do want to touch a little bit, and this gets into the kind of nerdy data-y stuff, but I apologize in that I love it, so you're stuck with it for a little bit, so I'm sorry. Um, but I want to talk about our full-service partnerships and our full-service partnership approach. These are our most intensive, aggressive outpatient services that we provide. And we provide them because we know that they're very effective. So, RAND, which is a nonprofit think tank out of LA, looked at LA's full-service partnership data. And there they found decreased inpatient utilization, decrease arrests, which I'll get to, decreased homelessness, and better links with primary care providers, all of which sounds very good. And so when we look at our own internal data, we see the data closer to MIMX that found by RAND. The other part I want to bring up is you all may ask, well, Matt, why on the chart on the right or is the delta, the difference in the bars, why is the delta smaller than the chart on the left? And I'll actually share that this is a good thing because what we've focused on doing is really enhancing and tripling and quadrupling down on our full-service partnership services. We changed the inclusion and the exclusion criteria, much easier to get in, much harder to get out. We've added thousands of consumers to folks who get FSP services. And so essentially, what you see is that, as opposed to requiring multiple hospitalizations, multiple arrests, multiple placements at what are known as stupor mental disease beds, now if you've hit the psychiatric ER, you can qualify for an FSP or full-service partnership program. And we, the reason I bring that up in context of this conversation, you know, we do feel it's sort of a, a secret sauce that the department, that RUHS is, is very good at, and I can speak a little bit more to that. But we plan to interweave this narrative and the service delivery model throughout all the programs that we're talking about here tonight. Just another data piece here, and this is on our forensic full-service partnership. And so to get into a forensic full-service partnership, you have to come out of jail, come out of prison, or through the, what's known as the AB 109 program. And yet, what you see is that for these folks as well, very positive data and metrics. Significant decrease in arrests, significant decrease in mental health, psychiar, and psychiatric hospitalizations, and much more linkage with primary care, which that's a whole nother conversation that is intertwined into the village concept. The one point I wanted to make sure I hit before I moved on is that we have really come to believe this is also a public safety issue. And what I mean by that, if you look at our regular FSP data as well as our forensic FSP data, you see a significant decrease in arrests. And it's not as if our consumers here have magically figured out how to dodge law enforcement, but rather that when they have an appropriate placement, when they have appropriate housing, when we wrap appropriate services around them, guess what? Folks do much, much better. They're able to progress on their path towards recovery. That's something we're quite proud of. The other thing I wanted to, to mention here is the Healthy Places Index. This is where I, I start with my ignorance in that I am not an expert by any stretch, but I'm going to do my best to muddle through this as I understand it. Essentially, you know, we, we know there's a series of ongoing health disparities, and that the pandemic has really laid bare some of the inequities that the empire generally faces and Riverside and Coachella specifically face. As we've gone through the pandemic together, we've learned about communities, social determinants of health, and how they really intertwine to affect lives. We've learned about a tool that's called the Healthy Places Index, or HPI. And this is a new tool developed to assist in exploring local factors that actually predict life expectancy by comparing community conditions and how seemingly disparate factors such as tree canopy and supermarket access impact the wellbeing of our communities. As I hopefully show with some of our full-service partnership data, we've gotten better slash much better in terms of helping keep folks out of the hospital, out of jail, try to help them with housing. But we know that we need to do more, and we want to do more. And then, not to get too far into weeds here, but there's a, there's a, there's a concept about a hierarchy of needs, a Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And essentially, on the lower levels of the pyramid, you have physiological needs and then safety needs. And our thought is, we have been heavily focused on those areas, and those are critical. But we want to take really a quantum leap forward, and we want to move folks up that hierarchy of needs much more to self-actualization. So, as it pertains to recovery village, how can we do more? By blending the focus on recovery, the whatever it takes mentality to providing care and social determines of health, we can build a true recovery village. And so a village not only has vocational training, children's mental health urgent cares and rescue beds, supportive housing departments, crisis residential treatment, but also a focus on key components of HPI, such as employment, housing habitability, supermarket access. So, these all really serve as various levers that we can pull to help our community through recovery. And just so you know, our hope over time is to replicate these villages in multiple locations throughout the county in a regional approach. We really think that we are, we really think this meets, this addresses the needs of what's coming next. I, I apologize a bit for my background. If you see CBHCA, that's the Community Behavioral Health Directors Association. Today was Lobby Day. And so we're meeting with various electeds and, and really pushing the need to do more in terms of behavioral health. And again, we want to focus much more beyond even the things that we've traditionally done into spaces we haven't necessarily been in before, but we know that's important to really move the health of our, our community overall forward. Last part from me. Last part from me, the, the part, you know, why we're here today. As I mentioned, there is a state grant opportunity to the tune of about 2.2 or 2.5 billion dollars. It is rolled out in rounds. We are part of the southern region and the first, the first round opened in January. It closes March 31st and we hope to apply for grant funding. Also, in a similar vein, you know, we did open up a countywide RFP and we really feel that there's, there's high, there appears to be very high need in Coachella. We believe that the project that we have discussed with you all tonight addresses many of the issues that have happened historically, what are hap, what is happening currently and what we see going forward in the future. And so with that, Mr. Mayor and Council, I think that's all I have. I will stop sharing my screen. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Any questions from the City Council? A lot to take in.
It, it is. I, I'm trying to understand that it's going to be an inpatient substance abuse program, treatment program. Is there, and that, well, it's a two-part. Is it, is it going to be for adults and is there going to be one for children?
No, thank you, ma'am. So it is not, it is not locked inpatient psychiatric acute care beds. It is for both adults and for changing, changing children and will have the full continuum of care, right? So behavioral health, mental health services as well as substance. Because we recognize, you know, we need to tackle both sides of the coin, as it were, for age groups, both kids and adults.
Okay. And you did mention, and I'm quite familiar with, with the subject matter in that there isn't any psychiatric treatment centers for children in Riverside County because we constantly work with other counties to house them. Is there going to be a psychiatric component for children in that location?
Yes, ma'am. So I want to just make sure I understand the, the question correctly. There, there will not be inpatient child beds because there won't be inpatient, any, any beds, like locked inpatient, like acute care beds. However, there will be child services and psychiatric services are certainly part of the whole continuum of care and containment approach. So yes, child services for kids, but not, but we're not, it's not a hospital. It's not a behavioral hospital sticking in Coachella.
Understood. Okay. Those are my questions.
Pretty good. Any other questions?
Thank, thank you for, for, you know, providing the presentation. You know, it's always good. I think that when we're providing more services per behavior health, it's something that I've been asking for. And so of course, I'm always in support of any additional service to the city of Coachella and to the eastern Coachella Valley. And so I, I guess my question is, you know, I'm a little bit confused and because we did hear from the, from the owner. And so it, I guess if the owner is saying that they're not willing or wanting to sell at this moment, how is it that we're moving forward or how would it work?
Am I allowed to be confused as well? I, I think that, that statement took me a bit unawares. I, you know, I think we'll have to circle back with this group. I, I don't know if folks on the call or the Zoom have more details, but I think we had a, a different understanding of the situation, shall we say.
And then my second question due to that comment is, was there other sites that were thought of besides the site that we're looking at now?
There were other sites that were considered throughout the county of Riverside. And let me back up and explain a bit about this process. So we looked at county-owned land sites as well as what we call bring your own property sites, where developers would bring a proposed site for us to consider. And so this site was brought to us through the bring your own property site via developer, went through, you know, the RFP process, and I think it aligned very much so with the needs that we see in Coachella specifically. And so, you know, other sites throughout the county were considered. Transparantly, I'm not aware of other sites that were necessarily considered in, in the county, excuse me. I'm not aware of our sites that were considered in Coachella necessarily, but it seems as if based on the types of space that we need, the ability to remodel slash ground up construction seemed like a perfect spot that aligned neatly and nicely with what we project as needs in Coachella.
Yeah, I do, I do agree. I just because the way it has been built out, it does open up many more opportunities, I think, for anyone to come in and want to consider to make a change there or offer something else than what was originally proposed. Listen, I, I'm again always in support of, of increasing behavioral health services, especially in the city of Coachella. My guess from here, I, I'm curious to know what the landowner, what they have proposed or what their vision is to do with that site. If they're not, you know, wanting to sell at this moment, I guess I'm just a bit taken off, taken back by that. So that, that's all my comments. Thank you. Carlos, if, sorry, I don't mean to, to interrupt, but we can't hear you.
Oh yeah, obviously, it's a presentation. Obviously, if, if this group or another group were proposing, were proposing this project or a similar project, it would need to be applied through to the regular process of city council, planning commission city council. And obviously you would need site control before submitting an application for that. So that's probably the disgrace discrepancy is there.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much for the presentation. Very informative and I look forward to seeing where we go from here. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all. Appreciate it very much.
I think, thank you all. This is a presentation. It sounds like there may be more, I guess, negotiation that probably will, will happen. But in general, I think we all need more, you know, services in the east end and, and this will potentially be a project that will service Coachella as well as the eastern and the Coachella Valley, but the greater Coachella Valley. And I would just say that, you know, sometimes reimagining what the site is could, some people might get the NIMBY attitude, but if you think about, you know, the Betty Ford Center in Rancho Mirage, you know, if you think about, you know, other facilities that provide these amenities, they're, they're needed. They're, they're needed and, and if this can happen, you know, it might be a good thing for our city. So I think generally you, you heard where the council's at and looks like there's a little bit more work to be done. But thank you, Dr. Chang.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
All right, we'll move forward now on a presentation on coronavirus. This is COVID-19 Response. You were on.
So our case rate information, when I reported it last, was at eight point, nine point eight, excuse me, and is currently at four point one per hundred thousand population. I know he's about to. Thank you, Jason. Our positivity. Our positivity that data went from four point four two weeks ago to now is at two point two. And currently hospitalized is eighty-seven individuals and last reported two weeks ago was at one fifty-five. So you can see our trend is very positively going downward at this time. Our vaccination update data really hasn't changed much from the two weeks prior. The numbers changed less than one percentage in all of these categories. So Coachella population fully vaccinated sixty-four point fifteen percent. Coachella population partially vaccinated seven point nine seven. County of Riverside fully vaccinated sixty-one percent. County partially vaccinated six point eight. And those in the county that have also received the additional boosters at thirty-one percent. The, this is my last slide, but I wanted to include that the state has announced that effective on the first of April with regards to mega events, that requirement will be lifted. So mega events are defined by the state as for indoor, it's a thousand attendees or more and outdoors, ten thousand or more. And with regards to mega events, vaccination verification for, it will no longer be required. It will be strongly recommended for indoor mega events and recommended for outdoor mega events, but not required. Capacity limitations, there are no restrictions and physical distancing, again, no restrictions as of April first. And with that, that does conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions of the council on this topic.
Thank you, Maritza. And I'd like to welcome, for the record, we have a council member, Vimanisito, who's arrived, as well as council member Delarza.
I joined like forty minutes ago.
Five minutes ago.
Six forty already.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel?
No, that's good news. It's good news.
All right, we'll move forward on the item number four. This is an energy efficiency upgrade project.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The presentation before you is a energy efficiency project that staff has been inquiring about for a few months. We've been having, during our staff meetings, having a discussion on maybe doing some upgrades to our city facilities to kind of help in two ways, you know, be more energy efficient, reducing costs and improving quality in our buildings. As, as we indicated, we've been doing a lot of research on this item back in twenty-eleven. The US EPA developed a energy efficient report on local government operations. And they determined that cities spend about ten percent of their budget on, on, on annual operating budgets on, on energy costs. You know, it's a very big significant cost. Based on our budget last year, we, which has been about one point five million a year just utility bills, leaving lights on, you know, parks, facilities, sanitary district, water, the water pumps are running twenty-four seven. There are a lot of benefits to, you know, doing energy efficient projects. One of them is reducing obviously the GHG emissions, reducing carbon in the air. You know, energy costs go down. The big one is also economic benefit. A lot of, you know, they were giving stats. It stimulates the local economy. About sixty percent of the workforce comes from the local area along with half of the equipment I purchased are from local suppliers. So it does create a lot of job creation and market development, improves indoor quality, which was an interesting one. Just having a well-designed lighting system, comfortable heating, cooling, ventilation can improve comfort and productivity. Reduces fatigue, accidents, turnover and health costs. So that's a big improvement. You know, a lot of these equipment also, you can include air filtration systems that would help against COVID viruses and other future pandemics that would make people feel comfortable entering county, city facilities and government facilities, knowing that they have the best equipment out there. And it demonstrates leadership, you know. It showcases a real world applications on these technologies. People can come in and look at these systems and say, wow, these are real applicable. So we, you know, we, we're looking at these projects and wanted to bring a few examples. So this is our existing lighting, interior lighting in our corporate yard and in our parks. We'd like to upgrade everything to LED, you know, and more energy efficient, a bigger, a brighter, a brighter loom and a cheaper cost annually. These are some of our current HVAC systems that are entering the end of their shelf life. We would like to upgrade them to new systems that are more energy efficient and better for the environment. We were thinking about maybe other examples are carports and other corporate yard has carports. Maybe install one during the civic center around the parking lot, around the library, senior center. There are different options that we can talk about. You know, talking about our sanitary projects, you know, improving pump systems, irrigation systems, equipment, upgrading SCADA software, which also would save from ARPA funds. You know, some of these projects are, were earmarked for ARPA and, you know, doing a separate energy project. We can free up that money and use it for other community needs. Water, as indicated, the water systems are on twenty-four seven. We need to evaluate the, the systems there, the pumps and see what other alternative sort of technology we can implement that would save costs. Luckily, California agreed with the EPA and passed California code forty-two seventeen that allows cities to forego the low bid process and go straight to source to, with certain companies that are certified through the state. That allows us to pick the best company that would meet our, our demands, our quest and our design options. There are also benefits and disadvantages to this. It will eliminate the cost of contracting, doing RFP process. It's much quicker. Disadvantages is we might, we might eliminate the competition, losing vendors that are interested in this, in these projects. Next step, staff would, with the direction of council, would like to engage some of these companies. And a lot of them provide free preliminary energy analysis and audits of our current systems. They go out and look at our systems, our buildings free and they give us a kind of, you know, their recommendations of facility improvement measures. They provide product options, design alternatives. They do performas, potential financing rebates. They do a nice cost analysis and they provide recommendations to the process. Staff would, would recommend moving forward with this and, you know, bring, once we have our findings, come back to council with some more action items and recommendations during this time. I would like to open up for any questions or comments.
Thank you, counsel.
Very supportive. Think it's needed to make sure we modernize our, our buildings and, you know, obviously to save energy and also to make everything more presentable. So anyway, we can do such very supportive of this. So thank you, city manager, Dr. Martin.
Any other questions?
No questions. I'll be waiting for the analysis down the road, but I am completely in agreement with where we're heading.
I support it as well. Good job, Gabriel and staff. Thank you.
Generally, I think this is good. Oh, council member, I seen them. You have any? I, I mean, generally, it sounds great. Show me the numbers.
We'll do.
And I would suggest that, that we pay a lot of attention to, you know, any type of proposals to look to overhaul our sanitary as well as water departments. And in particular, I would, I would stress that it's important that, that future expansions of those, of that facility is not hindered because we want to put a solar trough. You know, please look at the overall, you know, build out of, of our water sewer areas. We wouldn't want to enter into a long-term agreement and then find out that we need to expand the plant because of growth. So accommodating, you know, for, for growth and then as well as really ensuring that, that technology is adequately going to serve us is important. I only bring that up because about ten years ago, when solar was, was coming, there was a project that, that got, you know, started and ID was involved, there were rebates, et cetera. ID was involved, there were rebates, et cetera. And the technology didn't actually pan out. So the guarantees and, and, and making sure that we're really being thorough and ultimately that it doesn't impact our ratepayers to me is what's most important. So I'll be on the lookout for whatever you guys come back. So just let whoever you're working with know that it's about the cost savings, but it's also about holding them accountable to the type of product that they're going to bring and, and ensuring that the life expectancy of that product is actually realized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll move on with written communications. Are there any written communications?
There are none.
Want to take cover. It's recommended that consent be acted upon simultaneously unless separate discussion or action is recommended by city council members of the office. Where the wishes of the council.
Motion to approve a consent.
Is a motion to approve by Mayor Timbitos. Is there a second?
Second.
Just second by council members. The Larsa, for those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, what she carries will now come down to the main event. And this is our resolution two thousand, two thousand twenty two dash three four. Approving major budget adjustments for Chris Beer twenty twenty one dash zero twenty two, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During this time, I would like to call up our finance director to make the presentation on mid-year.
It's all cold.
It is really cold in here.
Energy saving your heater.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The city does a mid-year budget review that comes out in March of each year. So this is that, this is that review. Some general guidance is where the city is financially currently in the year, where we see the city going. I do want to take a little bit more time than usual on this because we do have quite a few moving pieces this year, a little bit more than usual. And we do have some changes in presentation. So I do want to make sure that everyone understands. Um, the presentation is a focus on the general fund for those who are not familiar with the presentation itself. The city does have thirty four funds in total, but they all flow through the general fund more or less. Because that's where the discretionary spending comes from, with the exception of water and sewer, which we'll touch on in the presentation. Okay, I do want to start with some background to put this in context because a lot of what's happening is is set up in the previous fiscal year. So this is largely, we're talking about fiscal year twenty twenty one, which closed already. But the city certainly put the city in a strong financial position coming out of twenty twenty one. In twenty twenty one, the city did end up with roughly, you know, using round numbers here, but roughly three million dollars in certain revenue surplus largely almost entirely due to sales tax increases that were unexpected in that did come in crunch for the tail end of COVID. As that everything opened back up. Um, we also did have, you know, spent expenditure for under budget directly. So total, total net sum. Total net excess was three point eight million dollars, which is significant for the city. It did leave the twenty twenty one fund balance, any fund balance reserves. I did, I did line them out here because I did want to go ahead and. So as you can see here, the total, the total that, that those those surpluses brought the total reserve to fourteen point three. They were, they were eight, nine million dollars prior to that. So that brought it up quite a bit. There are, there are other moving pieces. Highlighting the, the main, the main items here. I do want to go ahead and take this, discuss here what these, this is a change in presentation, but I do want council and and residents to understand what we're, what we're doing here with these presentations. The committed category is a category that's, it's being broken out, but that's councils on emergency reserve. So council did do a reserve policy during this, during this fiscal year. And said, you know, we, we set the, the reserve at three months of the general funds operating budget. So that, that is that number. It does show as committed because council did take specific action to commit it to that purpose. This assigned fund balance, assigned is basically where city manager myself will give some guidance on what we see as needed expenditures coming up and also taking into account what council a direction and where we're going. So it'll give us a little bit more flexibility. You'll see as we go through the presentation, there's a breakdown of what's in that category. So we can use it as a discussion point. And then that left us with a completely unrestricted three million dollar reserve. And I'm, I'll, I'm just explaining the categories here, but you'll see as we go through the current year specifically what is in. The only other background item that I did want to point out was the last bullet point, their city land was sold for three point six million dollars. This city did come up, did come out with, you know, quite a bit of investment return on that. So of that three point six million dollars, two point eight of it was allocated to general fund. There was part of it that went to the cities. The city's diff funds to repay some part fees, but it'll, it'll percolate back to the general fund in some future, but the, but two point eight is directly affecting the surplus in the current fiscal year. I am, you'll see that I'm taking it out of discussion items just because it's a one-time item, but be aware that that is.
Just, just to be clear, the the discretionary revenue of fourteen point three, the two point eight, is that in addition to that fourteen point eight or is it part of the fourteen?
So the fourteen point three is the beginning from prior year.
Got you.
So two point eight will be this year.
Understood.
It'll, it'll be in the balance, which will. All right. So just on the broader economy, there's quite a, quite a bit going on out there right now, but city tax revenues have rebounded significantly since the pandemic. We're expecting them to remain, our projections to remain strong and there are a couple of adjustments that we have, but overall, we, we do feel that those are going to continue with projected, with projections going through the rest of the fiscal year twenty twenty two. I do want to, you know, one cautionary note that I think we're all aware of, much more than we want to be, is we do have the inflation. Inflation pressures pushing after fuel costs, that sort of thing. So that is offsetting some of, it's offsetting some of the revenue growth. At the same time, the city does get some increases in revenues, for example, with gas tax. So what affects exactly? Not sure, but, but just it is, it is, if they continue to outpace revenue growth, that will become a concern at some point in the future. We just don't see it being issue necessarily during the current fiscal year, so fuel cost, direct fuel cost stretches. This big picture, the city was able to take advantage of some historical low interest rates by refinancing debt that offset some of the lower returns we've been seeing over the, due to the low interest rates. Expect that, expect the low interest rates to kind of change as the Fed moves forward with rate increases. And we do expect to retain significant reserve balances at the, you know, at the end of the fiscal year. We don't see anything changing our projections. All right. So here's just a graphical representation of the general fund revenues over the past seven years. I'm going to go ahead and start with revenues here. Okay. So you could see, looking at the blue, the blue graph on the top, that is the revenues. You can see that last year it did spike quite a bit and it kind of leveled off going into this year, but you'll, we'll come back to that shortly, but just that.
Nathan, I'm just going to interrupt you for a second. Can you just make sure that you're speaking into the mic the entire time? Because your, your voice is coming and going. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me know. We have a bit out on the presentation. So, okay, so just graphical presentation of it. All right. So a different way of looking at the revenues just for, for residents and those who aren't familiar with the city revenue structure, just want to note two things on this. One, the vast majority of city revenues comes from the large blue section, which is over twenty million dollars. So tax revenue is certainly a consideration and we'll talk more about the current years going forward. The other one that I didn't want to, want to point to is the last, the last item in the, in the key on the right, and that goes to the four point one million dollars lighter blue square. That is transfers. When I said that all, everything more or less circled, but circles back to the general fund, those transfers are revenue such as fire, fire tax revenues coming back to the general fund from the fire authority, which is a separate fund. So just so everyone understands what transfer is because it's a huge, a huge part of that. It's just the way that we, we present them for accounting. Okay, so on, on this particular item here, you'll notice on the on the mid-year adjustment column, want to kind of, kind of flow through that a little bit. Sort of toward, sort of toward the all right, there's, there's the two point eight one six million dollars in land acquisition. So you'll notice that the tot, the total at the bottom, there's three point three million dollars roughly in revenue, revenue increases that we are recommending council adopt as part of the budget amendments. However, when we back out the two point eight million dollars for the land acquisition, you can see that we're, we're projecting or recommending that revenue be adjusted to twenty seven point, point eight five million dollars. So the increase there is, is five hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars that we're, we're recommending revenue increases. You can see that the three hundred and ten thousand dollars consists of property taxes. We, we do project increases there. It does make sense with the property values going up. We only, we only see increases when properties, you know, sell. But it, but we would expect an increase and we are seeing increase thus. The other thing, which was a little bit out of the ordinary, the utility users tax is, is, has increased from what we projected. Usually that one has historically not been, not been increasing, but we do project that we're going to get an extra hundred and sixty thousand dollars in that. So that's what makes up the three hundred and ten thousand dollars and then just construction permit fees for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The other transfers is just a grant transfer from a, from another grants fund. So those are, those are the true revenue, operating revenue increases that we're recommending and that we see when we update the projections that we, that we use. Looking at the the graph for twenty twenty one, you can see that that did, this, we're back to, this is the rev, this is still revenues, but this is a slightly different one. And I'm kind of pointing it out because well, there, there is a we do have an item to discuss on that. You'll see that it did spike quite a bit last year. It spiked in, it's all sales tax. It was several million dollars worth in sales tax that, that propped it up. And then you'll see the projections for this year, they're not to the same level. So some of that is smoothing out from twenty twenty when we were, when everyone had COVID, you know, COVID related returns. Because the sales tax returns were delayed and the, they use estimates to pay us. So they changed the way that they did estimates and then they changed the payment timing. So there's some fluctuation just between the years, but still there is quite a bit of overs there than what we had expected. All right, let's go through this. Under your side real quick here. I'm going to skip the, I'm going to skip these two slides. Other than, and you can't even see it very well, there's three hundred and forty one thousand nine hundred dollars in recommended adjustments. You, we categorize this by department and then by, by function, but in this case, I just want to go through the details of what we're, what we're talking about. So I'm skipping these slides just because they're not helpful in the current, using the current here items. Okay, so this, this slide here gives a little bit, a little bit you know, top down view here. So if you look at the top section, you see that there was an approved budget surplus of five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. That is what council approved and they approved the budget for this year. Straight from the budget. We are projecting that there's going to be a five hundred and twenty nine thousand dollar increase in revenues that, that's excluding the land. We're, we're kind of leaving that out of the discussion point on that just because want to see what our operations are providing. So that's, that leaves a total surplus this year in addition to the three point eight million dollar surplus last year. It leaves a total surplus of a little over a million dollars. That the city has for the city. So the next, the next item down now council did approve, you know, one time, primarily one time expenditures, a couple of them are ongoing, but mostly one time expenditures for to, you know, to improve service, increase service with, whatever the case is. So that, that's a million dollars. They're the biggest item on there being the Puerto Rico Transit project that was, that's the last item in the list of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These were ready approved during, for separate, separate actions by council. So that, and those were, you know, supposed to come out of the reserve balance. That was how they were presented and approved. So that, that, those expenses are already there. We're proposing mid-year adjustments for the three hundred and forty one thousand. I did put over to the right, you can see where it says proposed expenditure increases. I did want to list every little detail out, but to sort of summarize, IT is the biggest piece of this. Due to the, you know, due to the retirement of the previous IT manager, due to quite a few, quite a few factors involved. We do have, we do have additional, additional items in this category that we're recommending that the city address. One serious component is the emergency operations center. Those, the equipment in there is significantly out of date. So that is, that is a significant part of it. It was the fifty, fifty eight thousand dollars, something like that. We also did have issues in that the city needed to update its licensing for software. So that is roughly fifty thousand dollars of that amount. And then we do have additional consulting costs for the consulting firm that is assisting with the IT in the interim while we go out for an IT manager, which, which is in the process. And we did, we did do interviews today. So that is, that is the biggest piece and those are the biggest components of that piece. But again, all necessary to keep the city operating at its current levels and but some, but some issues, especially the, you'll see. The, the rest of, the rest of the items, special events is primarily the fourth of July. There are some maintenance items, just general overall maintenance. We do have quite a bit of moving pieces going on. So that's kind of, that's, that's involved extra staff time in a couple of areas to facilitate that. And then fuel, but you know, we all can see fuel prices have gone up. So we're just, we just request and then we increase the budget to cover. Obviously, it's hard to project what's going, what that's going to be, but just to kind of put us in line at least. So that, that leaves us with a bottom line number, which would be a decrease to the general fund reserves of roughly three hundred thousand dollars. However, we were expecting a million dollar reduction. So tech so this is, this does come out much better than where we were expecting to be at this point in time due to the surpluses that we're seeing with the additional revenues coming into the city. So okay, so then actual fund balances themselves. I do want to, do want to go through a few, a few items here, and this is coming back to that presentation that we're discussing earlier. So you can see on the left, this is where our, this is where our, our beginning fund balance is, so to speak. And then these are the, are our beginning projected fund balance. All these are still projections, but then you can see that when we're starting at twenty, we're starting at twenty one million dollars and then our ending results to twenty four million and that includes the land adjustment. We talked about that briefly in one of the question, in one of the answers earlier. So that will increase our fund balance there. And you can see the three oh six reducing the fund balance to offset that. The important part here again is the categories. Again, committed is the emergency reserve that, that council put in place. The assigned is what I want to talk a little bit about the details on. You can see that, okay, so I did point out the sales tax being quite high and you saw it, it kind of just stood out as being very high. We, we believe that's correct. We have talked with the state. We have talked with our tax consultants. This city does employ tax consultants, services. With all the moving pieces though, I wasn't comfortable enough to just leave it and just say that for sure, we're going to get the one point five million dollars going to be available. We did have this issue two years ago and we did find out that we did have to return the money. So just out of an abundance of caution, I can't, I can't put it as a liability. It doesn't meet the definition, but just out of a bunch of the caution. We're, we're just saying, let's not go appropriate that to a project right this minute. If we get through the end of the year and nothing, nothing comes in that suggests that we have a problem, then we'll just say that we have that available for, for whatever the case is. I just want to be careful. I mean, council can use it if needed. Just want to allocate it there as a, as a line item. We had talked about the cities replacing the, the financial system or the ERP across the city. So some of that was coming out of, out of ARPA funds and this would be the remaining balance. So just setting that aside, this, this assignments gives us kind of like a discussion point to, in a presentation. So all of it can be changed. It's all at council's discretion. It's just simply items that we know are coming up and that we know we've talked about and are going to need to address. Council did also put an unfunded accrued liability policy in place when we refinanced the pension application bonds. That, that number one point four is, I mean, it's not even a very good guess because we have not gotten an actual evaluation since we paid it to zero last year. We won't get it till October. So I'm kind of looking at the fact that investment returns are up, but that's, that's offset by some of the. So I'm kind of looking at the fact that investment returns are up, but that's that's offset by some of the some of the changes they made in the plan and just saying we need a placeholder for that. As soon as we have the actual number, we can reassess that number, but per the policy, we do need to put some discretionary funds toward that balance. So that was that's the purpose that is. We do have one avenue fifty widening project. We believe that's going to be covered, but due to the rising costs, we might have to come back to council for somewhere between zero and five hundred thousand dollars. We just we just know that that's an issue, so I didn't want to leave it off, but with that will obviously come back for separate discussions. Should that be the case? And then land proceeds council had quite a few projects kind of. You know, foreseen in the future that we haven't locked down that would all require land purchases. So in discussions with the city manager, we we kind of just thought that the proceeds will likely go toward one of those projects, the land purchase on those projects. Just we don't have anything locked down right now specifically sale. It's going through that project. You're going through that project. We just didn't want to present to the, you know, necessarily present to the public that, oh, we have two point eight million dollars extra. That's just sitting there. It is. It is definitely something that will need to be used on one of the contemplated items. There is only one item on there that I did that we did not. It was kind of kind of out there and council's aware of it, but I just wanted to put it into the discussion here, but I didn't necessarily want to call it an assignment. We do have the eminent domain for law and trotta for the Avenue fifty I ten interchange. And council did did approve that settlement and we did make the payment on that. We are looking at funding sources for that item, including the developer and a couple other funding sources. We believe we'll get that taken care of, but but we it's potential that we would have some sort of local match consideration depending on how that goes and where we go with the developer. So I'm just noting it as.
To to just add clarity, the the total fund balance of twenty four. That is separate from the assignments, correct?
The assignments are a component of the twenty four thousand. Yes. So the way that you would read this and this this is just, I mean, this is not. This is a general presentation, just generally accepted accounting principle presentation. The way you would read this is that the city has a definite identification for all the funds except the unrestricted funds. And those would be the funds that you would say just have not have not don't have a purpose yet assigned to. And just for those who aren't familiar with the previous previous presentations, it was just one sum. And that works fine when you don't have a significant fund balance, but as you start to grow your fund balance as the city has, you do want to be able to point out what the fund balance is being used for. That's the purpose of the change in presentations. Otherwise, it looks like you just have a money city. All right. I think the rest of this should be pretty straightforward. Utilities. So we're removing from general fund utilities, water fund, the only recommended changes here, connection fees. You can see that the budget was eight hundred and seventy thousand was quite high in comparison to like two thousand nineteen where it was four and forty three thousand dollars. Were these are these are development impact fees. So these are dependent on developments. We're just trying to avoid having the budgeted revenues be significantly higher than what comes in, but if if other revenues come in, it'll 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 be what it is. Nothing is contingent on whether this goes up or down. We just don't want it to look like we're completely off. Um, so the only real change items involved here, the seventeen thousand dollars is just there. So put it on there. The three hundred thousand dollars is for grants has to cast for mobile home park for the from the state. And these are the design and setup costs, the the full item. I just picked the number so that we have enough to cover the setup to get the item to council. And then that'll that'll come as a full contract to council for the full one point, that was one point two million dollar, the remainder of the one point two million dollars. So the only real changes that we have there. On the expenditure side. There's not. There's not a whole lot of change because these just mirror essentially the other items with the exception of we did have some increases for waterline breaks, repairs, just overall standby time went up and there were some significant maintenance or repairs items. I just took it as a whole and added some to cover the remainder of the year. Obviously, if there are no breaks and maintenance items that come up out of the ordinary, then we won't need the money, but didn't want to leave the budget completely exhausted.
And and explain something here where you have your actual dollars of expenditures are seven point three, yet your adopted budget calls for fifteen point three. Now, the the delta there is that within the adopted budget, you also have the capital expenses. And you've included them as one solid area. So some first, some people could read that the same way. You just presented a projected revenue of eight point eight, but yet now you're showing me a projected expenditure of fifteen. So just explain that.
Yes, of course. And that that is that is very that's very true. So you'll see when we get to the fund balance or net position slide, they call some different things here, but when we get to that slide, you'll see that we back out the capital projects for exactly that purpose. Those capital projects, should they all be funded, would come out of the net position or reserves of the water fund. And that's what the discrepancy is. And yeah, the way it's set up, it is very difficult to leave it out or include it. Either way, you got to explain it. So.
Yeah, please explain it.
Yeah. So for so for sure, that is the capital projects and they will come out of reserves, which the reserves are there to cover those projects. I mean, that's all purpose of having so. Okay, so moving to the moving to the sanitary district, there's there are no adjustments here except for just bringing the the connection fee revenue a little bit more in line with historical and what we're seeing. Again, if a large project comes in and we ramp those up, then they'll they'll be what they are, but nothing, nothing's really affected by them. I just don't want to have a huge discrepancy between what we budgeted and actual when we know that they're probably going to come in a little bit less. No, no expenditure adjustments in the in the sanitary. Okay, so this this kind of coming back to the fund balance here, water story, this is the slightly different presentation. So I think that the if you look at kind of moving down the slide where it says projected fund balance on June thirty twenty twenty two. This is where we're going to end. I think this kind of highlights the point. So if you say restricted, we have restricted fund balance of nine million. Those are the connection fees. And then we have unrestricted, which would be just water rate payer fees that are for general purposes, but you can see that we have twelve point seven million dollars. Those are the those are the reserves that we're talking about on the previous slide that would be available for funding projects and are budgeted for projects to 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 a large degree. So that that's that's where that leaves us with the with the fund allowance on on the water on the water side. Not not no, no, there's no categorizations and such in this in this presentation. Council did did approve a contingency reserve in the water fund, but we don't show it on the presentation and that's only to smooth out water rates going forward. So take it into account when we look at revenue projections. Similar on the sanitary similar presentation, looking at the projected fund balance. The notable item here you'll see is that the unrestricted fund balance is positive. Last year it was negative. This is due to just normal operating fluctuations. So that does go positive. That does go negative. We the city staff does have on the radar as an item to look at and study the city's utility rates. So we will. We will do that as part of that evaluation, whether we whether we need to take that into account or not. It just depends. I mean, that'll be an entirely separate study and separate item. So. Really quickly, because I know some council members are not as familiar with this this year. I just the budget calendar. I think that council starts getting this the last bullet point, may for early May. The rest of it is internal city manager and staff, and I'll be working through the the projections and details and up to that point. So early May. Then usually we schedule a buddies a budget study session in early May. Last year was a little bit later because of the pandemic. We got some stuff rearranged, but we usually try to leave enough room for a second study session if necessary. Historically, too, I've been here for we haven't needed it, but um, but we do have that available and then or the first meeting in June is the target for the for the budget adoption itself. So just to be aware of the schedule. Usually close, we'll stay on schedule this year. That is what I had for the presentation. Obviously, I just picked highlights because there is a lot that you'll notice from the agenda packet. There are a lot of numbers, especially this year. So any specific numbers you weren't having to talk about, I know I did not.
All right, council, any questions? You guys taking all the numbers? Any questions? Got a boy? Is it? No, 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 or what do you think?
Nathan, could you take off the you stop shirt? Thank you. Now, I don't have any questions. I we are in much better shape than I than I originally thought we were in, so that makes me very happy. And just again, thank you, Nathan, for always getting a very detailed presentation and breaking it down also that everyone easily understands it as well as attendees. So thank you for that.
Any other questions? I have questions. So I've gotten to review these and I will just say that and I'll make a note that when we saw the surpluses and revenues eight years ago, there's a coincidence. Anyhow. So one of the things that 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 is that is very good is that obviously our liquidity is 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 we've we've added to our liquidity and and at the same time, it's it's been substantial. I think that that I just want to press upon the council that those are one time liquidity changes and we should be very mindful of how we think about long term. Particularly because we want to be able to see a trend, you know, and and are the is that liquidity change going to be able to be substantiated year after year? There seems to be a little bit of ambiguity with this with the state in terms of you know, kind of the sales tax projections and is it a true up? And I think you playing a conservative to say that, okay, you know, three years ago, four years ago, we they they overpaid. But then we had to pay it back and we were conservative at that time. And so it didn't really cost us in that position. I happen to be a little bit more optimistic this time, just because the state is really in a very good financial position and seeing historic surpluses and I I'm a kind of saying that a a lot of that sales tax increase could be associated with the fact that people were working from home and people were purchasing from home. And as a result, you know, I've seen it in my neighborhood where the UPS shook, the Amazon. The let's see other one. See other delivery FedEx. You know, they've been very, very active around me partly. You know, my wife's probably one of the corporates of that, but 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 you know, I I think there's generally a trend there and and which may or may that may or may not last and we'll see, but but I but I think I think that that net position is good. I I just want to draw attention to the fact that a lot of what we are seeing right now is is us as a city making key investments in back into the city. So the one time investments, I saw the fifth, the Sixth Street investment, saw the special events because we want to get life back to normal. I've seen, you know, park donations and which probably sports leagues and you're starting to count for them already. So their one time expenses, but overall liquidity is very, very solid and our revenue projections are are still exceeding our expenditures, which is good absent the one time expenditure. So it's not a trend. It's it's a conscious decision on your guys' end to spend some of the liquidity and that's and that's good. I I think that the council in general, you know, we did pass a policy that said, okay, we want three percent to six percent or three percent, no, three months or six months of our of our operating budgets to stay in and in reserves. And I think that's a good thing. It's a good policy. There are some cities are a little bit more aggressive than that. And that's something that we can consider too, but in the event that there is a catastrophic die off like we're or revenue jump, I don't think Coachella would be the only one that would see that and hopefully, you know, the state would intervene or any of our insurance, you know, we we could kind of go from there. So I I I think the picture is is good going into the new budget year, though, I would say that that there are some things that concern me mainly inflation. Also, we know that historically our contracts have gone up about six percent and and then we know that we also entered into some new employee M U's. So as as we as you start doing your budgets, you know, let's be mindful about all of that. And I do expect to continue to see a balanced budget moving forward and and with with reserves now. The 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 question, I think, for all of us and for all of you, I'm sure is is how do how do we continue to have more reserves or more revenue come in? You know, and I think there's some good trends, right? We we potentially, you know, you got housing that's being built in the city and hopefully the the more we get more stores and that follows up because you're going to have people that can spend dollars and we should really get aggressive on our economic development strategy, Gabriel, and trying to attract and maybe re recalibrate our economic development message that we've seen more housing come in and then more housing is on its way. And I think for us and because in general and as the valley in general, I don't see. I I think our 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 housing trends are 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 going to continue, you know, and 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 so I think it's a good thing. It's a good message to say and that we're we're going to see more housing. But that could be a good economic development strategy, Gabriel. And I think you need to really think about that and how we we catch that message, particularly as we go to ICSC and I see you see the ICSC. You know, to really kind of just show what like how Coachella is is gaining and these projects are on their way as well. So so I just want to keep that into into consideration. I I am going to be a little critical right now. Nathan, this is I I haven't seen our Catherine. And I haven't seen her C D I award. And we want it for like the last ten years, and I do expect to continue to win it. Now, if there's a reason why we're not winning it again, then you need to let me know. Let us know as a council. But I do want to see the Caffer because that's important. As as a lot of that is tied to some of our bond language narrative that we put out there in covenants, I should say that the so perhaps you could give us an update on where the Caffrey is.
Yes, um, let me speak to that really quickly. A couple of things as far as the award goes, we did receive that for the prior year. They, I think I got it last month. So but we did receive the award on the last one. We haven't submitted the one for this year. So the one for this year, which is the Capper that is in question is it's with the auditors. It's mostly done there in the drafting stages of the Caffrey itself. We is significantly behind you to do the what we had to deal with with covid. We are there with it. We have met all the required requirements for all of the bond indentures that are required. It is required that we present on one hundred financial statements. If we don't have audit, so those were all timely filed. And then we'll go back and file the audit and financial statements as needed. So we'll be in compliance with all of the covenants there. I do expect that to be final. I'm hoping by the end of the month, but worst case scenario, the first couple of weeks of April. And that's just that's just the due to staffing and just the way things have been.
Yeah, no, I I would hope that, you know, C D I F I company or whoever gives those awards takes covid into consideration. Maybe they did. Maybe they didn't. However, I I'm just going to impress upon you that that's that that should be the standard. It was the standard and she is the standard. And so I will let we should let just one step slide, but moving into next year, that Caffer and that C D I award should be something that we should strive for as a as a city, because it's something that we've gotten for the last ten years. You know, so Mr. City Manager, you know, that's something that that needs to be, but but overall, I think that the budget picture is positive. The other thing I did notice in reviewing the numbers on the water side. There is a little bit of a, you know, or you know. And I know previously we had discussed, you know, is is a type time for rate augmentation? You know, and that's something that as a council, the whole we should look at and really kind of decide what what the right time is if if at all and 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 particularly in lieu of of changing state policy. For example, I know yesterday the the state of California put out their new Chrome six report and they're looking for feedback. And I can mention it now here, but I'll mention it later in my comments, but that's that's something that we need to pay attention to. We anticipate what's coming down the line and I saw Mr. City Attorney, you sent a little brief about Chrome six and what occurred yesterday. So these are all things that we really need to think through, particularly because what we had studied before was substantial rate increases to our residents that frankly, we're going to add somewhere like seventy five and a hundred dollars a household. And that would that would far exceed the one percent that the state tries to achieve when it comes to rates or or disposable income in in that house. When it comes to rates or or disposable income in that house. So what we had did at that time. We came up with a three-pronged approach. One was to lobby Sacramento to get heavily involved in in. And and talking to our legislators as well as ensuring that the. The actual legislation. Excludes Coachella or in some ways. Is is done in a way that doesn't actually, you know, hurts us minimally. We came up with a strategy of of. Looking at how we're going to service. So it was a financial strategy of how we're going to service the fund and and pay for operations as well as capital improvements. And then ultimately, we came up with like, how do we work with all the locals, right? So it was it was somewhat of a three-pronged approach. I know staff that that's here, you know, we we you are familiar with that, but. In lieu of what's happening at the state, we should anticipate that and really pay attention to that as we go into the next budget year and as that. That item becomes more and more pressing. So again, Nathan, thank you for the presentation. Obviously, it's good news for the city of Coachella, you know, the the liquidity of the city is solid, our revenues are solid. Our investment into the community is solid and I think people are seeing it. So, you know, come the new year or the new budget year. That I I think that if things stand, particularly as we true up, we should be able to really, you know. Do a little bit more Kinesian economic policy, so that at a very minor level. The very, very serious, the city level, but I think it should be good. Thank you. With that, we are asking for a motion on resolution number two thousand twenty-two, that's thirty-four.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Vimen, into.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
I.
Councilmember Galarza.
I.
Mayor Procham Gonzalez.
I.
Mayor Hernandez.
I move forward on the public hearing item. This is resolution two thousand number twenty-two dash thirty-three thirty-one. Conducting property owner ballot proceedings. Carlos, I don't have a script. Do we need to read the script or are you going to read the script?
The last slide kind of walks us through our next steps.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening is a public hearing item for a new LMD, LMD District Thirty-nine, which is the Sevilla track. The Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two allows city councils to establish districts to pay for the operation and maintenance of public improvements that benefit. The private properties within the development identified. This track, the Sevilla track, track three eight oh three eight four, excuse me, is going to have a hundred and seven residential parcels. And it will have two storm drain retention basins. In addition to that, the district will be responsible for the maintenance of pedestrian trails, landscaping and lighting improvements. This district is located. Roughly just north of Avenue Fifty-One, just east of Van Buren Street and west of Frederick Boulevard. And generally north of Avenue Fifty, and this is just a bird's eye view of where the track is located. And moving up, just this is a. Shot of the track itself. You'll see the two basins are to the far right of the screen, the far east side. The both the south and the north and of the draft are where the basins are. The landscape improvements will front at Avenue Fifty-One. And those will be the the costs that will be borne by this district. Or O and M costs for the first fiscal year, these. These costs are for fiscal year. If adopted, the district, the first time that the district will be levied will be for the coming fiscal year, starting July first of two thousand twenty-two. The O and M costs are twenty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars. The admin costs are just under seven thousand. There'll be a collection reserve. Of eleven thousand six hundred and twenty-five and the balance to levy is forty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. The assessment rate per benefit unit, which is per residential unit, the hundred and seven parcels identified for the track will be four hundred and nineteen dollars. On an annual basis. This public hearing was set by council on January twenty-sixth. The ballot was mailed, as noted in the prior slide, with the bird's eye view. This parcel is one parcel and it's owned by one property owner. That ballot was. The property owner was balloted and we have received one ballot back. The next steps, Mr. Mayor, if he would open and then close the public hearing. Receive any public testimony on the item during that time and then direct the city attorney who's going to act in the city clerk's stead to tabulate the ballots returned. Once. Mister City Attorney has tabulated the the ballots, the results will be announced and then identify whether a majority protest exists. At the there are two resolutions before the council, the first of which will basically identify those tabulated results, which is. Two zero two two dash thirty-one. And be acted on by council at the time that the tabulations are available. And then if the assessments are approved. By the property owner that's been balloted, then council will act on the second resolution two zero two two dash thirty-two. With that does conclude my presentation, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm happy to answer questions on this item.
Go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to? Speak on public hearing on resolution two dash twenty-two dash thirty-one, conducting property owner ballot. Protest proceeding and resolution two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-two, proving information of landscape money district number thirty-nine. So we attract three eight zero eight four L O D thirty-nine, confirming the engineering report and the assessment diagram and the and ordering the levy of the collection science. Anyone? So now I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I do have a question. The L O M D does include a.
An escalator, yes.
And the city should be able as.
As needed will.
Will be able to adjust.
Correct. So it can keep up with the costs, especially as we are seeing inflation this year coming.
Thank you. Okay. Just your attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Council. At this point, I'll tabulate the ballots for the formation of L O M D number thirty-nine. We have one ballot here. And the one, yes, in favor of the assessment. So at this point, you can move forward with the formation of the district since we do not have a majority protest.
All right, seeing that we have a. A ballot in in the affirmative and I will go ahead and ask for a. A motion to approve in the affirmative, the formation of the ballot proceeding and the creation of. L O M D thirty-nine, known as the Sevilla track thirty-eight zero eighty-four. This is lighting and asking district number thirty-nine, once again.
If we can take both resolutions separately, since one is declaring the results. And then the second one is a formation. So we could just take take the two resolutions under separate.
If I could take one one motion to. Declare the ballot proceedings and to approve the ballot proceedings. Is there a motion to approve the ballot proceedings?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Vimen, Jacinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
I.
Councilmember Galarza.
I.
Mayor Procham Gonzalez.
I.
Mayor Hernandez.
I move forward now on the formation of L O M D lighting and landscape district number thirty-nine. Sevilla track thirty-eight zero eighty-four L O M D thirty-nine. As the motion, as the ballot proceedings were in the affirmative to create. L O M D number thirty-nine. Is there a motion to approve the L O M D approval or creation?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Well, second.
A second. We get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Vimen, Jacinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
I.
Councilmember Galarza.
I.
Mayor Procham Gonzalez.
I.
Mayor Hernandez.
I move forward now on the item number twelve. This is Coachella Entertainment Park and Mr. Gabriel.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Moving to share my screen. This item before you today is entertainment permit number twenty-two dash zero one for the Coachella Entertainment Park. The applicant is Nicholas Mesa. The site where the applicant is requesting this permit is located. As shown on on the screen and the address is eighty-five nine nine four Great Boot Boulevard. It's proposed on one point two four acres of leased property from the Union Pacific Railroad Company. These are images of the site from two thousand seven. This is an image from Google Street View. In November two thousand seven, this used to be the site of the former H and H lumber. And they had outdoor storage as well as metal fencing and open canopy structure. It's adjacent to the railroad and within the Palo Viejo downtown district. The project description for this is the applicant. Is requesting approval from the city council of outdoor entertainment venue. On the one point two four acres, the zoning is manufacturing service. The applicant does want to operate this facility to allow for events related to food, music and arts. On site, there are two repurposed shipping containers that would be used for food vendors. And accommodates restaurant facilities. And next to that would be outdoor, an outdoor dining area. There are two twenty-nine-foot wide driveway gates. Two points of access, which would be important for a facility like this to allow for emergency access and circulation. And there is especially event stage for performances. Facility like this would be consistent with the general plan vision for the Palo Viejo area. To provide a convenient and continual environment for everyday shopping and dining. And bringing together the community in a one-of-a-kind Coachella center, that specific heart of this of the city. And so this kind of. Special event operation would kind of help meet that that goal of the general plan. As far as the venue operations, this is how it would operate. The applicant is requesting flexibility to be able to have events up to seven days a week. There are onsite. Available parking of seventy-eight spaces with the. Potential accommodation of up to additional twelve overflow spaces on the property that's leased by the applicant. Events would be required to end by two AM according to the conditions of approval. There would be security required for events that exceed fifty persons or when alcohol served. And the increased security measures could be added to the permit. Based on requirements by the city manager or Coachella police. For entertainment permits, this is something that's allowed in the municipal code. And it does require city council to consider this at a public hearing. And so if granted, they have the ability to operate this for a year. But they would have to come back to city council for consideration for renewal of the permit. And this could be renewed for additional thirty-six months. Here's a site plan that was submitted and this shows the parking area that's on the south side of the site. And most of the site is actually an open area, so it's outdoor area. The perimeter of the event center is surrounded by fencing, so that would protect visitors to the site. From the railroad, which is directly to the east and Great Boot Boulevard, that is directly to the west. And onsite, you can see the two shipping containers that were converted and. You have the dining area that's outdoors, that's demarcated with railroad ties. There is a stage that's proposed. Here are two images of the two existing driveways that exist and the fencing. That was installed. The venue parking area would consist of compacted decomposed granite. And it is conditioned that if additional dust control measures would be necessary, that the city engineer could require that for the permit. Here are images of the converted containers. At the top. And at the bottom photo shows the the stage that would be used for concerts and entertainment events. And this permit would be considered exempt under sequoia for existing facilities. As the project consisted of the operation, licensing and minor alteration in an existing location. And there's no expansion of existing or former manufacturing use on the property. Staff does recommend that the city council adopt the resolution two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-three approving entertainment permit. Number twenty-two dash zero one, subject to the findings and conditions in the resolution. That's the end of my staff report. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. I believe the applicant is participating over Zoom and could probably answer some of those questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Planning Director. Council, any questions? Is there any members of the audience that'd like to? Speak during this public hearing?
Yeah, I'll start. Just wanted, you know, applaud our our business partners and our residents for taking initiative and. Launching something like this in our city. We need more of this in in our city so that. Our our residents, our neighboring cities enjoy what we've created here and. And, you know, just creating more nightlife. I remember when I first came back from college, I'd have to drive twenty miles. A certain direction or, you know, just to go out and do something and, you know, the more we create. Will benefit our youth as well as their parents. And so I just wanted to, you know, very supportive of this and. Applaud staff for the recommendation to approve. But I'll leave comments for our colleagues.
You still do try to drive twenty miles.
I I drive for work, but but now I can. If I want to go to, I I wa- I I watch the Super Bowl here and I look forward to attending more events. I here at home versus having to drive elsewhere.
Any other questions?
I do, and it's more for Gabriel. Since he's bringing this forward, is that so? Just so that I'm understanding it, only because it's an outdoor event. So are we saying that some of our empty lots then in the downtown area, they can be converted as well to outdoor events?
Yeah, so the allowance for entertainment permits is in Title Five of the municipal code. So entertainment permits could be granted in any zone. There is no area where this is. Would only be permitted in. So so some of our downtown lots, they could propose this. And it would require a public hearing, just like this application. And the city council would need to make that decision. And I believe the city council did try like a similar use like this on a city-owned property near Veterans Park. And I believe it was called like a. Food truck park.
It was.
We have tried that before as a city.
Yeah, they're like March of twenty twenty, right? I mean, yeah, March of twenty nineteen before COVID, it was like every last, so, yeah.
Yeah, they, so normally, you know, we do things on on city land. I know in the city of Indio. Eric did the, he continued the RV park out there. But and just so that we, you know, just so that we, you know, making sure that everyone who can, because I know there's a lot of. Folks out there that are selling their lots and, you know, they might be having some difficulty selling those lots. And so. You know, if this is an opportunity for them to make revenue as well without having to put a facility on the lot. You know, that's an opportunity for them as well. And just so that I fully understand this, because this is very new for me, you know, just from being on the PC for so many years. This is, this isn't something that we, that I've seen come before. I again, I I did see the RV part come before, but that was on city on land and. You know, that was a bit different, not exactly the same, but and just so that I'm understanding what our municipal code allows. And then the other question I have is, I know on here it says for. And then the other question I have is, I know on here it says for. Rentals for weddings and guisnieras and birthday parties. And then for my concern there is just, you know, night, of course, just because on one side there's a train and then on the other side. You know, it's a heavy, heavily used boulevard. And so I just want to make sure that that's those safety precautions are being held. You know, making sure that that's safe out there because that that is a concern of mine. Normally, the events obviously are not next to a railroad and they're not next to a boulevard. You know, at least not going, not at least not those vehicles going as fast as they are. And so that is a concern of of mine just because of it's in between those two things. And then we're saying it's it's seven days a week and then it's gonna. Go up until two o'clock in the morning. I'm trying to read all the notes here. And then just so you know, Gabriel, it was a bit, I was a bit confused by your staff report because it does say staff recommends that the planning commission. So I wasn't sure if you were suggesting it and then asking for it to go back to the PC. Yeah, I'm mute.
Okay. I'll find that, but that would be an error because the entertainment permits only go to the city council. It doesn't require review by the planning commission.
Okay.
So that's.
Yeah, it says, so I just wasn't sure if you were suggesting it and then for us to, you know, recommend it to go to plan the commission, but. That was an an error, I should say, city council. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'll comment. I just want to state for the record that. Property that I do own within the downtown, it's more than a thousand feet, so I can participate in this item. I will say that, you know, that. That our grid, our our grid that we're the beneficiaries of as well as three other jurisdictions in the Coachella Valley. Indio, Necca Thermal. It offers an opportunity to, you know, kind of reimagine and kind of create more urban type of. Of uses. And at the same time, I think when, you know, council member. Galarza, it just hit the nail on the head that the need to create. Entertainment opportunities as well as, I think, a small business opportunities is something that. We need to assist and and do in our downtown. The small business community is obviously the heart of our community and if we can incubate more businesses, whether they be. You know, folks that are coming from their homes, coming into this space or folks that are selling from. Wherever and coming into the space, I I I believe that is a good thing. In addition. You, we. You know, there are neighboring cities that are moving aggressively to try to attract the same clientele that we have. And, you know, the city of Indio. Approved a food truck park in a privately owned. Facility and it's where they used to have a little brewery and then LGBT nightclub was at. That makes it deal Chevron and in the back they have little. The Rocky's Pawn Shop right across the street, right in that little area. And they, they have different food trucks and, you know, Edison lights and a nice little vibe that's occurring. And 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 it's good, you know, there's people that that are going there and it's creating a little civic life and so for us. I think that that's something it's this is, this is in the right direction. I I have more of a question for Andrew. And it's when is the, when is the streetlights coming, the intersection coming on Sixth Street because. That will significantly slow down the traffic on the boulevard. I know everything is pre. You know, wired and and but I haven't seen the lights install. I saw ID out there not too long ago. Looking to install that, but but Andrew, when when are these a new streetlights going in on Sixth Street?
Um. Thank you for the question and the streetlights were scheduled to be in already. I have an email out to the contractor this week. And I have not gotten a response yet, but. The streetlights are anticipated to go in. Any day now, but as soon as I hear back from the contractor and have an exact installation date, I will be sure to let the entire council know that date.
Yeah, I I think that's an important element that needs to. Go into Grapefruit. It's become very fast. But with the streetlights going in and and all the signalizing that's occurred, I I have no doubt that. That it's going to slow that intersection down and and get the traffic to a reasonable level, so. I I do think this is, it's good, it's trending, it's 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 going to allow for. Just more civic engagement, more opportunities for our local vendors or entertainment for our youth and families, frankly.
Yeah, no, and it's nothing new. We do the day-to-day event here too and we we need to do more of it, so. If there's no further comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
It's a public.
Okay.
It's seven fifty-two. Anyone that would like to speak? Seeing that, I'm going to go ahead and close.
There there's a hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
Not able to see the head on my hand. Maybe I'm not set up to be able to do that. Just a moment. Yeah, I'm not able to. Can someone please allow them to speak?
Good, good attendees.
Alrighty, I'm unmuted. Thank you so much for that. I'm wondering if there are any other comments that weren't taken. Regarding that little issue with our city clerk not being able to see hands raised. Starting my three minutes now, I totally agree that we, you know, do need some more arts and entertainment. However, one of the major concerns I have was reading the up to seven days a week, up to two AM and I definitely agree that. Even though special events are motivating and they are welcome in the area. Twenty-four, you know, excuse me, seven days a week and then up to two, two AM, there are many people who work at twenty-four hour buildings or twenty-four hour establishments who. That's the middle of the night for them, you know, even though that's the middle of the night for most other people, but in terms of it being woken up at. Two AM or three AM in the middle of your sleep session between nine AM and, you know, excuse me, between nine PM and seven AM, you might not. Be so happy about that. So that's why we have our special event permit applications. That's why each one of those has a date, has a number of attendees, has things that are going to be stipulated. And I don't think that as a general rule, we should give one area. The green light to unilaterally control whatever goes on and however they choose to use the property, be it private or not. I think urban areas are wonderful, but the main thing about Coachella and our valley is that it is non-urban. It is spread out, it is family oriented and it is quiet most of the time. We actually have a decibel reading of somewhere bit low seventy. And anywhere up above a hundred can really start to cause some damage, so I would recommend that. The whole council review the four point ten section of the city of Coachella's general plan update. Where it talks about the environmental baselines for our noise ordinances, how those noise metrics can. And will damage certain areas when volumes do get too loud. And being in the area that it is, it will definitely get loud when our normal events that happen on weekends without. Permits for special events will undoubtedly end up getting even louder to compensate for the extra noise in the area. So unless we want to open the door to a precedent of certain areas being able to. Unilaterally control seven days a week up to two AM events and the noise that that will bring to the area. I I think that we're going to have a lot more complaints and a lot more issues regardless of whatever community, whatever nightlife, whatever. Entertainment it brings because we are so much more in the community than just that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there's anyone else raising their hand, I'm not sure. I don't have access to allow them to speak, but I just want to make clear for the record since we are live that. When hands are raised, they're not missed. Our council is very vigilant as well as our staff, just like they were for this this time around, so if. There are other. Can can someone please allow them to speak? I don't know why I don't have that capability.
I can, hello? Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, hi guys. First of all, good night. I mean, uh, good evening, guys. This is Nick. I'm the one that's applying for this application. I appreciate all comments and concerns before the application or the project was built out. I went ahead and and thought all this through. I currently own the Coachella bar that sits directly across the street from the project now. I wish we had enough business in the city of Coachella to go ahead and do business seven days a week. But as a bit, an open business, being in business for three years owning a bar, we only are able to do events on Fridays, sometimes Saturdays. So being open seven days a week is the idea, so we don't have to be coming back and and bothering council with. With food trucks every time we want to invite food trucks. That is the, that's the idea of bringing food onto the property seven days a week. We will start with maybe one or two days and eventually work our way up, but for the first year. We we, as of now, we don't have any special events planned. I'm looking for the, you know, locals to approach us and and come up with ideas. That's why we said, you know, a private event, birthday parties. We don't have any of that planned. It's just an open idea so that we could engage with with the other locals who live here to hopefully come and use this property. And and make use of it. It was a, it was an old, it was a empty property that, you know, was very, not very nice to look at. For about the first three years, when I approached the the owners to lease it out, I I then. Came up with the idea to use it just for parking, but I see that we lack in a in areas to use for private events, so that's where, that's where, how we came up to this day today. I really appreciate everybody's concerns. I am here. You guys have my number. If there's anything that I could do to make you feel better about the the park, I'd be more than happy to explain or walk you through the the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any what, any other comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second, but can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Biman Hasinto. Oh, I, she'll be, I'll I'll go back to her. Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Alarsa.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez.
Prime.
Okay, thank you. And I believe Mesa, our councilmember Biman Hasinto has stepped away for a little bit.
Okay, move on now to public comments. Public may address the city council board of orientated items of interest. There any public comments?
We do have a written public comment. Is there anyone in chambers that's going to speak? If not, I can, this one is within two hundred and fifty words.
Anyone in chambers?
There's none. Okay, I'll go ahead and read this. This email was forwarded to council sitting at four sixteen PM. And it states, "Good evening. I would like to talk about the short-term rentals in the city of Coachella. We are seeing one owner purchase a lot of properties in single-family and multi-residential zones throughout our city. Owners who are from out of town with vacation rental companies. How do our residents benefit from out-of-town people to own and operate short-term rentals in Coachella? I understand there is a nine percent transient occupancy tax. However, how much of this tax are we seeing? How else does this benefit the people of Coachella? When we clearly know people will be staying here short-term and most likely be spending their money in La Quinta, Palm Springs, Palm Desert, Indio, etc. Not local businesses. I also think it is safe to have Airbnbs, I'm sorry, it is not safe. To have BMBs near elementary schools when we do not know who will be staying in them. Or if Airbnb is following the background check policies. Other cities have taken measures to avoid out-of-town people from taking over their housing market. For example. The city of Palm Springs only allows an owner to get one vacation rental permit in the city. La Quinta requires a local person representing the owner who can be at home within thirty minutes, any time of day or night. If there is a problem, so I would like to propose for the city council to consider a limit on short-term rentals. Thank you, Clarissa Grano.
Good guy, well.
We have a hand raised.
The Henry James R.
Thank you, counsel. So I had another public comment, just generally. As we were talking about, you know, the midterm budget update and how we're doing very well fiscally. The ideas that we have cropping up are wonderful, all of the extra expansions, all of the improvements. The one problem that we are having a setback on is some of the road that is attached to those new developments. Specifically in front of the brand-new development that will be next to the Sunline Transit Center. That turn lane is nowhere near capable to accommodate the extra seventy or eighty units that are going to be filled with people. Not alone that area, but just the other returning area coming north from the other side where there is a pedestrian walk. So I can just foresee a lot of traffic, a lot of cluster and a lot of damages to cars when people inevitably get into accidents. In those areas, so I'd like for the council to be cognizant of that when we are having our planning commission meetings and when we are giving. The general ideas to the city management about what needs to be improved. Some of those areas are desperately needed. Specifically inside of our road improvement package that just got approved. They say specifically curbs. Handicap access ramps, things like that, which is exactly where we can pull those funds from to make sure that those curbs and those. Access areas that are in the center divider are just as permissible for the vehicles. That are going to be traveling to allow for greater access and safety for the pedestrians. So thank you.
Thank you, James. Those are good comments. Would you like to address this, Mr. Dri.
You really wanted to be last, huh?
Good evening, council. I am a resident of City of Coachella, but tonight I'm just here letting you know that. I'm the government affairs person for the Imperial Irrigation District and if any concerns or anything, any presentations that the city would like, definitely wanted to set that up for you. Wanted to share that.
You're welcome and congratulations on your position.
Thank you.
Is there, all right, team then council comments? Start to my right, councilmember Alarsa.
Uh, yeah, I, you know, I'll talk upcoming right, I, and then I'll go back, but. I'm looking forward to attending the senior inspiration awards. You know, it's always great, you know, whenever it's at the senior center and then now to, you know, the public county for recognizing seniors in District Four. And we get a, you know, chance to recognize an individual in our city year after year and so we look forward to. Attending such next week, Thursday, right? Next week, Thursday. In addition, had a great time at the Veterans Memorial or Park mural unveiling. It was good to see community out and celebrate and see more art in the communities. Some, you know, it's very neat when we see projects. You know, such as schools that we were once talking about, you know, or murals that we're talking about and then. We're able to point to them right and saying, you know, this is sort of like what, you know, we're we're able to do, you know, by standardize and be able to participate. With our, with our folks. I did not get a chance to attend the Arbor Day event, but wanted to applaud our staff and our council colleagues that did attend. I. Had a family obligation that morning, but really got a chance to see the pictures and saw a lot of staff present. So, you know, thank you all for doing such and for the continuous events. I'd seen a lot of calendar invites for upcoming events and we're looking forward to. You know, mariachi festival and so forth, but aside of that. Um, aside of that, uh, no other, uh, public comment. Any commission I sit on, uh, has not met since we last met.
Thank you, councilmember Delgado.
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Beaman Jacinto.
She stepped out a moment.
Councilmember Mayor Proten Gonzalez.
I, yeah, I get, uh, did not have the opportunity to go, uh, see the unveiling of the, um. Mirror at the Veterans Park. Um, but what I did do is I was, um. Fortunate enough to go see my grandson in Chicago graduate from boot camp from the US Navy. So. Um, I was, uh, doing some other patriotic duties, um, but I did participate. So I want to congratulate my, my. Oldest grandson, uh, Conrad Diaz, who is now a US, um, uh, is in the US Navy. Um, and he's our, uh, our sailor. Very proud of him. Um, the other, the other. Engagement was, of course, the Arbor Day where we planted quite a few trees. So that was a lot of fun. It was exciting to see a lot of community members out. Um, staff with their families. It was, it was a nice, beautiful morning. Um, it also encouraged me to go home and do some planning of my own. So I got home and I planted another tree. And did some landscaping in my backyard. So it was a, a, a good event that actually, um, uh. Yeah, allowed me to, inspired me to continue that, that, uh. That, that planting. So that was a beautiful event.
Thank you. Again, I, I will give everyone kudos and marita and your team. With Janet and everyone, you guys did an amazing job and, uh, all the council members that were there, uh. Councilmember Adado Gonzalez, myself, city manager, you know, showed up late, but, you know, I think you, you got to water up the tree. Uh, but, uh, but everybody did a, a, a great job of, of, uh. Of just putting that effort together. And I think that's, you know, it's something we should do more of, you know, there, there's a, a strong. Uh, uh, you know, there was strong community engagement and involvement. And, uh, it's something that we should think about particularly, you know, if there's days that maybe we want to. Plant a tree or plant a plant at Bagduma. And it's already pre, pre-planted, but we could go out there and encourage people to come and help us or come and plant a tree or, uh, at Las Flores. Or, you know, out in Sierra Vista Park. I don't even want to call it a park. I call that the trailhead. Because that's where the CV link is going to go, but, but, uh, they're cool little events and maybe there's even L and D's if people want to get involved and. And, uh, and go and plant trees and just beautify the area. But it, it was, was very, very nice. And I just want to commend everybody for that and. Um, I do want to just end the, the meeting, uh, and in honor of, uh, of a former council member and mayor. Uh, that, uh, that passed away recently. That's, uh, Kelly Ramos. Uh, you know, Kelly was, uh, on city council, uh, in the, he was heat in the seventies, I believe, and. Seventies and eighties and, uh, you know, Kelly, if I could read his obituary, Kelly had many life experience. That were shaped by his upbringing and his youth. He excelled in sports, becoming an all-star in football at Coachella Valley High School and at College of the Desert. Uh, the civil rights movement in the late sixties and the early seventies became a passion for him, recruiting families and friends. To join his efforts within the Brown Bridge, the Coachella Valley Voters League, the United Farm Workers. Upon marrying, Kelly returned to. Uh, school and graduated from California State University, San Bernardino. His desire was to become a probation officer because he felt that justice systems were not fair to the Hispanic community. And in this position could help those most impacted by the courts. Not finding a position in the area, he saw, he saw. He saw resulted in him becoming a teacher and a coach at Coachella Valley Unified School District. As he began his teaching career, he was recruited to join the founders of El Progreso del Cierto, whom launched a nonprofit medical clinic in Coachella. Where he served several administrative positions. He felt proud of his work there as those most in need were getting medical attention. And their work made a difference in the community. It was here that he launches political career, resulting in being elected to the city council of the city of Coachella. And eventually becoming mayor. Once his political career ended, he returned to teaching at Coachella Valley Unified School District upon his retirement. Both his mother and his, and his wife played a role in teaching him the value of religion in his life. His wife introduced him. To Our Lady of Sola, a Catholic church in Coachella where he remarried, remained a permissioner until his death during his time. There he became involved with the Knights of Columbus. Many people met Kelly throughout his lifetime. As a classmate, activist, healthcare administrator, politician, teacher and coach, both in and out of Coachella Valley. Yet it was his friendship that most people valued by all. Uh, he had a gift with people. Uh, he made people feel better, uh, when around him, uh, he will be missed. He survived by his wife Esther, son Anthony and daughter-in-law Monica, daughter Erica. And grandchildren, Jesus, Nikki Bella, Matthew, and brothers Nick and Noel. He is preceded at death by his father. And, uh, and Adio Ramirez, mother, uh, Coinstacy of Ramirez and brother Raymond. That guy was, the visitation will be held. At Forest Lawn in Cathedral City on Monday, March twenty, twenty twenty-two, beginning at five PM. Mass will be held at Our Lady of Sola Church in Coachella Tuesday, March twenty-nine. Upon conclusion, the reception. Uh, shall follow at the American Legion's post cemetery. Um, on behalf of the city of Coachella, we want to. Thank, uh, Kelly and his family for, uh, his service. And we, uh, are all indebted to folks that, uh, serve on council. Um. Now and, and previously, it's not an easy job to, to govern and, and sometimes, uh, you know. Politics and, uh, you know, different brands of politics and different issues and things. Uh, you know, and then different decisions that you have to make can be difficult. But all those that serve, you know, we, we, we thank them. And so Gabriel, it, it is a tradition for us that, that we will. Uh, if you could buy a wreath on behalf of the city of Coachella and, uh, send it to his, uh, funeral and, and just honoring him and. And letting, uh, we thank him and think of him. But I wanted to just end my comments on, on the recognizing and ending this meeting and. In honor of, uh, uh, Mr. Kelly Ramos. And if you could, please, uh, have Andrea create a resolution. Um, and, uh, we, we can send it, put it in a, put it in a plaque, put it in a, a frame and, and send to the family, uh, letting them know that. Uh, we are closing and honoring his legacy here in the city of Coachella. With that, those are my comments. Port your, Mr. City Manager.
Rest in peace.
No comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we adjourn.